Good morning. I call to order the regular planning board meeting for May 19th, 2022. If you would please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'd like to note that Anita Corby and Natasha Tatum have respectively health and work issues this morning and will not be with us and are excused. But we do have a quorum. And so the next item on our agenda is adjustment or approval of the agenda.
I move we approve the agenda.
Approve the agenda as amended. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bob. All in favor? It is unanimous. Next item is approval of the amendments from the April Planning Board regular meeting. Are there any adjustments, additions, edits?
I had three edits. And the first one is on page three. It's about in the middle of the page. In the paragraph, it starts Development Services Director Steve Edwards. At the end of that, I would like to add the word requirements. It just makes the sentence a little bit better. Right now, it's his.
I'd listen to the audio and see if that's what was said. I can't add something after the fact if it was left out. But I'll listen to the audio again and see if that was said.
Oh, okay. And, okay. So, the second thing was on page four. Second to last paragraph, first sentence. Add the word "it" after "if." And then finally, on page six. Paragraph beginning Mr. Brown. Third line after the word "slower," add "speed limits." That's all.
What was that one on six again?
On page six. Paragraph beginning Mr. Brown. Third line after "slower," add the speed limit. Word "speed limits." It just dies at "slower."
But again, would that be a matter of what was said or?
Yeah, I mean, again, I can listen to it and see.
I think both the first and the third one would be a matter of reviewing the tape to see what was actually said. It certainly makes sense to do the "it" in the middle one. Anybody else have anything on the minutes? Okay, is there a motion to approve the minutes with the edit and subsequent review of the tape on the items identified?
Nobody wants to. There we go.
I motion to approve.
Bob, second?
My second.
Jim? All in favor?
Aye.
Appears to be unanimous. Thank you. Okay. Do we have anyone who wants to address the board with any public comments? We do have one member of the public out there who is not an applicant. Seeing not, we'll go on. We have no old business. We'll go on to new business. And the first item of new business is a request to amend the height limit for fences in the front yard. Steve, I'd like to hear from you first. You introduce this to us.
Thank you. Madam Chair, and good morning, board. We now have a quorum.
Note that Mr. Callahan has left the room unexcused, and we still have a quorum.
Okay. The applicants are present, as you can see, and they have submitted a request to amend the text ordinance. So it's a citizen's initiated amendment. And what they're seeking is to reduce the height of the fence. I'm sorry, to increase the height of the fence in the front yard. They are requesting a text amendment that would allow fencing of six feet in height, no closer than 10 feet from the front yard boundary line. Currently, that setback is, the ordinance reads, that the fence height can't exceed four feet in the front yard or beyond the principal structure, whichever is greater. The reason for the text amendment is that the applicants have purchased a lot behind them, and they now have a, what's considered a through lot. These are not your traditional through lots that we have over here on Beach Drive, where all the lots are through lots. This is created by the purchases of a lot behind them off of another street. So now they go from a northeast street to a northeast street, which creates a through lot. The applicants had gotten a fence permit, and the installer installed the fence six feet high within the rear front yard. The ordinance does recognize that a front yard on a through lot is on both, that fronts both streets. And then the ordinance states that for purposes identifying the front yard for the principal structure, it's the addressed side of the street. Again, the traditional lots that we have over here on Beach and Dolphin, or Dolphin and Pelican, as they run, the addressed side is commonly known. In this situation, the addressed side could be either or. And the ordinance further states that fencing cannot be in the front yard, so it has to stop at that 25 foot. Their fence exceeds that. And that's why we have the text amendment for us. The proposed language, they are proposing language in 7.8.3 to state that no fence exceeding the height of four feet will be constructed within 10 feet of the street right away from the front property line excluding alleys. So the change there is 10 feet. The next item that they are proposing to change is 8.14.4. If a lot is contiguous to two streets, corner lots, the front lot shall be the shortest of the two sides. Here's the change. For traditional lots, traditional through lots or traditional double front lots, the side with the street number assigned is considered the front yard. For non-traditional through lots or non-traditional double front lots, the side which is the house is located closest to is considered the front yard. And so that's what they're looking at doing. And we do have a definition was added, proposed, I mean, for non-traditional through lots. And that's one side of a lot. One side of the lot, for the purpose of fence placement, may be designated as the rear yard to erect a six-foot tall fence, so long as it adheres to the general appearance of the neighborhood, does not obstruct clear vision, and is not on a corner lot. And like I said, the applicant's here, and I'll turn it back over to you, Madam Chair.
Could you read that definition again?
I'll try. One side of the definition, non-traditional through lots.
That's on page nine of our agenda package, correct?
I have it on page eight on mine, but.
Please.
It's nine on ours.
Okay.
There's two.
I apologize.
There's a.
Oh, I see. I was reading it out of staff report. I apologize.
The definition, right. The definition on page eight says one thing, and the definition on page nine says another.
Good catch. Let's see.
Pretty blatantly, no.
Yeah, 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 yeah. All right, let me reread that.
Well, which one are we looking at?
We're looking at the one that's in the page nine attachment. Okay, so an interior lot having frontage on two streets.
Which one of the applicants?
Wes had prepared this, but unfortunately, he's had conflicting time schedules.
Yeah.
And he was not able to attend. The attachments were.
Is that, is the attachment perhaps Wes's recommendation? Or you just don't know?
Yeah, that.
Because you've got the applicant's request, proposed applicant definition. So what the applicant has proposed is not what's in the attachments on the next page.
I'd have to ask the applicant.
Yeah, I'm just trying to. Applicant has requested one thing, and then there's something else. I'm not sure what else is different from the applicant's language. See what I'm saying?
Yes, I do see what you're saying.
Which creates even more confusion. Can you know what it is we're considering?
It says that the final text amendment language for consideration is found in the attachment sections of the staff report. So what's being proposed is the attachments.
Okay.
So the definition.
With no explanation of what changes were made, why?
No.
Be glad when we have a full-time planning director.
Yeah, too many hats.
Way too many. Except for mine, of course. Pun intended. Okay. I have one other question, but before I do, I will open it up for anybody else on the board to ask any questions of Steve before we hear from the applicant.
Steve, are they going to have to combine the two lots as one lot only?
They have combined it under the same parcel number, I believe, but they would have to replant it as a single lot.
Right. So later, they can't just split it back off and sell?
Yeah, they can.
Kind of like over there on a lot on the street, like 24 or whatever, the storage building and the.
Right.
Yes, yes. That was discussed the last time this ordinance was amended as well. And it's actually, and they'll probably discuss that. It's on 16th Northeast, I think.
Yeah, one of those.
Yeah, where they rewrote it. So that's now the side yard, and the front yard would be Oak Island Drive. It's a corner lot. But that lot, too, can be split off as well. Now, there's as developments.
Didn't they sell the house? And then now they sold the storage building and the big carport.
Right. One of the tools that zoning has available to them is if they do split it off later, it's considered, it was conforming at the time. So it's sort of grandfathered in, and it can stay. But it's not compliant with the current ordinance. And this is where a new planner will probably be more articulate at this than I am. But my understanding is that it would be considered non-conforming, and that we could.
No permits.
We could, yeah, no permits. We could withhold any permits until that's brought into compliance.
Into compliance, right. Okay. But right now, it's combined for purposes of so district fee, I suppose.
They're saying it's not combined.
I mean, there was something about combining in this.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right. Then we'll follow up with you guys when we get done.
I'm so sorry, but there's a mower behind me, so.
I'm trying to speak in, yes.
Couldn't hear you over the mower. What did you say?
Anything else, Mike? Anything else, Mike?
One more quick question. I know this has been done, build up the mound, and then put the four-foot fence on top of that. You end up with six, and it's legal. And first responders, police, they could walk up and look over if for emergency. That's one of the reasons for the four-foot, is police, first responders, fire having access.
Yeah, the fence height, and to get to the fill height thing first, is our fill ordinance could possibly allow that lot to be filled and the four-foot fence be placed on the field. You're correct.
Right.
As long as it's not higher than the height it's adjacent property, one foot above the road, whichever is less. So, but sometimes you see terracing because of that. But you're also correct, because in Long Beach days, it used to allow six-foot fence. And it was a public safety issue. Police had concerns about not being able to see the front of the house, to see if somebody's breaking in. Of course, today, they just do it in broad daylight, you know, so you don't know whether they're there.
Whether there's a fence there or not.
Whether there's a fence there or not. And, you know, dumb crooks maybe try to go through the front door. Smart crooks would jump the fence and go in the back door, so they can't be seen. It just, it was for public safety, the reason they lowered it to four foot. Then it flopped at one time again. And I was going to pull those records up.
There's a long history.
There is a long history. And it went back to six feet. And then it flopped back to four feet, where it's settled on for now.
Lee, you got anything?
Well, I just wanted to ask, so I can get straight in my own head. I assume that the original fence rule was made so that you didn't have a whole bunch of fences, you know, different kinds going down the road for aesthetic purposes? But now, are you saying it was for public safety purposes?
That was mostly around the corner lot discussion, Steve, not for the.
Has anything changed since the last go-round of this? And I'm not familiar with all the give and take. Okay, so.
Jim, you got anything for Steve?
No, not really.
Steve, I just want to get clarification on the permit, because there was a permit issued, correct?
For the fence?
For the fence, or not?
I can't remember. Sorry, I apologize.
Because I thought you said in your introduction.
They do have a permit in, but I don't know if it's been issued.
That there's a permit for the fence.
I'd have to double-check that. I apologize. If I can look it up.
And the reason why I ask that is not. We're certainly, you know, that has no bearing on, in my mind, of whatever amendment, whether, you know, it's pre or post permit. But the reason that that is important to me is if there was a permit issued to put this particular fence in place, then I think it matters how that, what they were told they could do by the town, not by the person installing the fence.
I want to say that the fence information is on the permit. If not, we always make the, it available to applicant if it's not and they ask for it. But we usually explain what the fence requirements are. And I'm going to look it up and see if they do have a permit.
And they can answer that question, too. But I'm asking you, since we're talking with you now.
Yes.
And that comes out at your shop.
Yes, it does. Could you give me your house number real quick, so I can?
157 North East 17th Street.
Okay. I'm only seeing a.
Yeah, because there was a, in looking at the aerial photographs in that area that are available on the county GIS, there appears to be at some point a fence that was just related to the single lot on 17th. And so that there would be a fence permit for that. That's not the fence permit I'm. So it would have been the 16th Street is where another fence permit would be, would have been located, if there is one.
They do have a pool permit.
Yeah, but that's on the.
Right. And.
17th.
And I do not see.
This 160, or the 16th? Yeah.
I do not see one for a fence. Let me check, see if there's a code case that was started on this.
Yeah, and there's a reference to code case. So I'm wondering how that, did that come about through?
I think it was discovery.
Discovery, okay. And how long has that been active?
I don't see, I don't see a code case on this as well. I didn't see a code case on it either. Let me double-check that. What would the address be on?
160.
160 Northeast 16th.
160, okay, thank you. Let me.
But it says in the memo, the property is currently subject to an active code case.
Right. And I figure that wasn't. And that's probably why, it was probably without the permit.
Well, I'd like to know what that, whether there was ever a permit for the fence or not that you have in your records.
I do not have a fence permit. It was a code case started as a fence height violation, no permit. It was a code case.
Thank you.
And for the record, that code case is 2022-000114.
So what would the date?
The, it was opened April 19th, 2022, is what's in the system.
All right. Anything else you'd like to add, Steve?
No, ma'am.
Any other lingering questions for Steve from anybody on the board before we hear from the applicants? All right. Ladies, you're up. Mm-hmm. Please. Yeah, if you state your name, address, and whatever you'd like to tell us. And then we'll ask you some questions.
Okay. Good morning to all of you, and thank you so much for giving us the time to share our unique situation with you here in Oak Island. My name is Sonya Cobble. This is Lorraine Tamara. We're co-owners of a home here. Have had a home here for 11 years now and have chosen this as our community to live out our best years. We've been in North Carolina for more than 30 years in the Greensboro and Raleigh area and have made North Carolina our home and chose Oak Island as our retirement, yeah, in a few years. So we are, as Mr. Edwards stated, we are seeking a text amendment for a six-foot fence for what we see as a non-traditional through lot or double road frontage lot. And we have asked for two separate text amendments. I did want to address a few questions that I heard. So our lots are not currently combined. We were advised not to combine them until we, yeah, sought the text amendment and whether it was successful or not. We have contacted an attorney to combine the lots, who can do that in a very short notice. So it just kind of depends on where we go here. I won't repeat what Mr. Edwards shared for the petition. I will share a bit how this came about. So we have owned our home for more than, yeah, more than 10 years, nearly 11 years. We had the opportunity to purchase the lot behind us approximately two years ago. At that time, we contacted a gentleman, who I believe was the planner here, to inquire what we could do with this lot and what we couldn't do. And we shared with him what our plans were for this back lot, which was to extend our living space, outdoor living space, because we were looking at installing a pool in our backyard on 157 Northeast 17th Street. Of course, with that pool, you lose a lot of your natural area. We have a dog that we absolutely love and wanted him to still have a backyard. He's accustomed to a 20-acre farm in Silers City, North Carolina. So we thought, okay, you know, one day we want to move here. Pandemic happened. We had the opportunity to become a resident, permanent resident, last year. And so the journey began to understand what can we do. The gentleman that we spoke with shared that we could erect a six-foot fence on the property line. So we didn't expect that we would have any challenges. That's number one. That was two years ago. Move forward to today. We contacted four fence installers last October. And due to material shortages, lead times, all of these things, they all said they would get the permits for us. We ended up choosing an installer who installs frequently on Oak Island. It was around Christmas time, last, week after Christmas, I believe. They showed up. That was their schedule. They were actually delayed, came in. I went out and asked about the permit. The gentleman didn't know. We called the owners. They actually didn't have the chance to put in for the permit because of holidays. So we immediately filled out for a permit. Not having studied the code, honestly, we didn't. We thought that we were advised appropriately and that our fence installers would know. No one ever raised an issue, none of the four installers. So we applied for the permit.
We called as well, but it was the.
It was holidays. So we called, we tried to get advice.
We left several messages for the town.
So we asked the gentleman to stop installing. We got the information. They couldn't come back to install until March, and they would give the materials to someone else. So we made the decision, with all the information we had at that moment, to go ahead and have him erect the fence. Now we're here today. I know it looks like we're asking for forgiveness instead of permission. That was not our intention. We really are, we want to be good citizens of this community. We strive to be the best people we can for the community and try to be good stewards for the environment also.
And let me interrupt, if I may, here. Like I said earlier, whether it's pre or post permit issues, at the end of the day, it doesn't come into my consideration because what I try to look at, I can't speak for the board, is, is this an issue that needs addressing with a change that's broader than just the one, one property owner? Is it something that affects more properties and adjoining properties, all that kind of thing? So that's where I have to look at. Is there something that rises to the level of making a change for the greater neighborhood good, if you will, for lack of a better way of putting it? Or maybe that is the best way to put it.
Yeah, sure. And we also heard that the fence codes had changed, four foot, six foot, four foot, six foot, a few times, and thought about the safety concern in our particular. and thought about the safety concern. In our particular situation, our house is on Northeast 17th Street. Our house is very accessible. You know, if there was a safety concern, I would assume that, you know, the, the police or ambulance or whomever emergency services would be coming to Northeast 17th Street. So we don't consider it a safety issue. Actually, we consider the four-foot fence a safety issue, because our, the fence is so far back in our backyard that if somebody wants to climb it, I mean, four-foot fence, look, you can put a little stool and jump over it. I'm 6'1". I've jumped a four-foot fence many times in my childhood.
I've climbed a 12-foot fence.
Exactly. Even a vinyl fence. I mean, you can kind of.
With the pool in now, in our main yard, with a four-foot, people are going to be able to see over, and that creates a liability. The dog, a four-foot with the dog is also a concern. He's a large dog.
A lover, of course.
Is the pool on your existing lot?
Yes, it is. Yes.
Could put a fence right there at the pool and get your privacy?
You had the fence there.
I mean, you could, but you lose your outdoor living space, right?
Maybe open the gates up.
Well, yeah, you have a gate this big, how, and you have a fence that's in between, and we want to make gardens and have a nice, beautiful view. And honestly, we bought this lot to extend our outdoor space, not to have a fence in between our two lots. It's, I mean, if you put yourself in our shoes, and you're sitting on your deck and looking out at a pool and a fence, and you're kind of hoping to see your nice, beautiful gardens, it's just, it's not, it's not, it's not what we would hope that you would see as a good option for the situation.
Our vision was to have the pool in our main home's backyard, which it takes up most of it, and then have the yard open up into the 16th Street lot. And we're, we're planning to keep it natural. There's several oak trees there. We're planning, we've planted some, some other trees. We're going to, you know, do nice flower beds. We want it more like a park-like setting back there. So we're not planning to.
Add any structures.
Build anything, add any structures.
Were there, before we start breaking into other questions, are there some other things you'd like to?
Yes, there's two other points that I'd like to make. So the, the main one is, we've experienced on both 17th and 16th Streets, severe erosion, severe stormwater. The sand washes off. We're luckily on an elevated lot where our driveway slopes quite a bit, same on the 16th Street lot. And there's, we've watched the lots on Yacht Drive and many lots down 17th Street be completely cleared. And since then, there's been stormwater, erosion, sand. The bottom of Northeast 17th and 16th were filled with sand after nearly every storm. So we see ourselves as good stewards of, of the environment. The reason why, and we didn't know at the time, it would cause an extreme financial burden for us to move the fence back, because we would have to move about 10 oak trees, very large oak trees, that I believe hold, number one, the sand, because we're on the high-level lot, and help with absorption of stormwater. Also protects our, our lots and our neighbors from hurricanes. So it, that's one piece. The second piece is, if you ride by our fence, you can barely see it, because our neighbors have 40-foot Leyland Cypress trees on their property line. And our fence is about 10-foot back, 10 to 15-foot back. So if you can.
We tried to include pictures, I think.
If you see the pictures.
Got a copy of our amendment. There's pictures.
I do think it looks nice.
Thank you. And our neighbors have thanked us.
Our neighbors on 16th are willing, they are willing to write letters in support. When we are walking the dog, we've had several people on 16th Street that we don't know come up to us and tell us how nice the fence looks. And we put, there's two little portholes for the dog to look through.
He's our baby.
They, they've told us, you know, it looks nice. It's, and it's set far enough back from the road. It's not, you know, right on the road. And as Sonya said, where it was placed was because of all those oak trees, but there was no way to bring it back.
Was the natural location for the fence.
Where it naturally fell.
Away from the property line, because the lot slopes. So the property line is somewhere in the slope. And in order to not have to cut down any trees and not be in that slope, that was the natural location for the fence. This was before we knew the codes and, and all other different things. So we thought we were doing a good thing at that point, and we also didn't want to cut down trees. Our neighbors have shared with us, they'll definitely come forward and make statements. They've shared that it's a beautiful fence. They appreciate the aesthetics. There's no impediment of our neighbor's driveway. And yeah, so that's why we're here today, to ask if you would support us or, or support the town and the citizens who have this situation where they're trying to extend their living space and, and are not imposing a neighborhood safety issue or, you know, aesthetic issue, that you would consider these text amendments.
I think Darren made a good point, that we have to look at the whole island and everybody doing it. Not everybody's going to have it as nice tucked away with all the Cypress trees around. I don't know what it'd be like going down, driving down the road, and you see six-foot fences, you know, out along the road. And that's our concern.
Sure.
And curb appeal, and, and in your situation, it, it looks fine, but we can't do it just for y'all.
Sure. That's why we proposed the non-traditional through lots, because it is a non-traditional, unique situation that essentially takes care of people being able to build compounds. This is not what we consider our front yard. And I understand the comp, you know, I don't.
Yeah.
Look, we want our property value to be high or to be valued also the way it should be, and not have a home that's a compound around, you know, a big compound that has whatever growing out in it. We, we recognize that that would be a hindrance for all of us living in Oak Island. So that's why we proposed the non-traditional through lots, that it addresses, in the event someone faces the same situation as us, where a back lot, what we consider our backyard, faces a road, could be addressed and could be a benefit for if someone wants to purchase a lot behind them instead of beside them on a corner lot.
Given the current lot prices, that's.
We made an investment for a backyard.
Yeah, well, and anyway, I'll, I'll, that's off base. Michael, do you have any other questions or comments for the applicant? Lee?
How deep is your lot?
I know width. I don't necessarily know.
And I'm talking about the lot with the fence on it.
Those lots are standard 55 by 120.
100 feet?
It's a standard lot.
50 by, 55 by 120?
It's 55 by, I didn't know the other one.
120.
120.
120?
Yes.
Okay, so you could still add about 100, almost 100 feet if you complied with the ordinance.
If we remove about 10 oak trees at $900 apiece, yes.
And so all those oak trees are, are between the existing fence and where you're planning to put the pool? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, there's, so there's about, I don't know, 40 feet of cleared area, because Hurricane Isaias cleared that for us, took down about six large oak trees that we had to pay. And that's near the Northeast 17th side. So in order for us to move the fence back, we would essentially, yeah, we would essentially have to take out a minimum of 10 oak trees to get to the 25 feet. If we then, let's say, we had the, this, well, just move it back more. You lose your living space, but between that 25-feet line, right now we're 15 feet, there's 15-feet difference around. There's a whole stand of trees that we would also have to take out. So there's no natural place for the fence to be moved, unfortunately, without, yeah, very high expense, loss of trees, potential erosion on our neighbors, and it's, and stormwater flooding.
How about just plant more, more bushes and shrubs, and you're only losing two feet. You got, you got a six-foot fence. You move it down to four, and you plant your bushes and shrubs to protect, you're wanting to make your yard look really nice and pretty back there anyway.
Still an expense, a significant expense for evergreen trees. And you got to maintain them, and how many, it takes 30 years for them to grow. That's not a solution.
And then you're going to have six foot on both sides, and then a four-foot aesthetically.
It's not pleasing. You see it on the island everywhere. It's not, it's not aesthetically pleasing, honestly.
No, you're saying this is all or none?
Well, we would like you to.
All alternatives.
At the moment, without a severe financial burden, what I believe is going to be an impact to erosion, which we're already facing on those two lots, and a privacy and safety issue for us, because a four-foot fence, from my point of view, can very easily be jumped. And somebody can come swim in our pool. We're liable. We hold the insurance. Somebody can swim in our pool, and, I mean, then they get injured and we're liable.
I don't think the two feet's going to make a difference if somebody wants to do that. They want to swim in your pool bad enough.
Yeah, but a four-foot foot and a six-foot fence, vinyl, vinyl fence, there's a.
They'll just come in from the front, and they'll swim in.
There was.
Were there in the front?
There was the text amendment made for corner lots for this same going from four to six foot, which was approved and is in the ordinance now. And down on the other side of Northeast 16th, the house on the corner of East Oak Island, they purchased this, basically the same lot as our, our lot, but on the other side. And they have a six-foot fence running on their property line.
And that picture is a chain link fence you can see through, correct?
It is, but it's a six-foot fence.
And, and, and it is, I know it's, it's, it's more and more, as, you know, we have tried to address different circumstances that multiply themselves through the island, it's more and more difficult to, for people to not try and compare with, this is over here and I'm over here, but it's a totally different scenario and reasons why that was done versus what you're looking for.
Oh, sure, I understand.
It was a text amendment. They combined three lots. And yes, it is a chain link fence, but we drove all around the island. There's plenty of six-foot, six-foot vinyl privacy fence on combined corner lots that stretch two to three lots. That, that was an easy example, because we drive by it. It's the exact corresponding lot to what we're, we're on the other end.
Maybe you need to turn the amendment, Steve.
No, they got a text amendment.
They got a text amendment in.
Well, we're not, we're not here to debate text amendments that are already in place on corner lots.
Sure, sure. But it's similar in the, in the sense of six-foot versus four-foot fence.
Lee, did you have something else?
Nope.
Tim, do you have any comments or questions?
No, I'm, it, it looks, I live on 16th Street.
I know you do.
And I tried to figure out what those little windows were on that fence the first time I saw it, when I went by.
It's for our big happy goofy dog.
Stopped and looked. So, it looks, it looks good. I mean, I, I can.
It does look.
I see both sides of the equation. My, the one thing that I would kind of pull back on is, if you did it just carte blanche on the island, if I had a house, and somebody put a 10-foot fence all the way down to the road, and I'm sitting on my front porch, and I'm.
That's exactly what I was.
I can see that. The one thing that I see that seems to be sort of a reoccurring factor is contractors that say, like the building on West Yacht, you know, because I got a call at the house on that one, to know why. And they were told that, no, you, you buy the house, we'll take care of getting the permit. They came and put it in place, and then all of a sudden, they started getting a flurry of phone calls of, why did you do this? Especially with, you know, the, the people, you know, should have known. But I don't know, it's, I can see both sides of the equation. It looks good if you do a case-by-case basis, if you can do a case-by-case basis.
But you can't.
But I'm a very big advocate.
Unless they got a variance, but I don't think they.
I'm a big advocate for the.
For variance. If they got a variance, that would be a case-by-case.
Yeah, that's what variances afford.
Right.
Deal with case-by-cases.
And that's a case-by-case. I don't, you have to have a hardship to get a variance.
Because my dream, when I moved here in 81, and there were lots for like $1,500 apiece. I mean, it was crazy. And I wanted four lots on one street and four lots on the other street. I wanted my house on the backside of the four lots on one street, and I wanted, I wanted my whole place fenced in. So y'all are kind of living what I was thinking back then. And I just think the town, I think we should do what's best for the citizens the best we can and still do our job. I mean, I can see where you guys are, you know, it's a, it's a nice-looking fence. But again, I wouldn't want to go build a house and have a six-foot fence all the way down to the road, so.
Well.
I don't know.
It can't be all the way down to the road, because you have a 25-foot setback.
Well, yeah, I mean, yeah.
And all we're at, so we're asking for and/or amendments. So and/or, either or, so I understand.
Here's what's not clear to me, and what's on the ground. So a lot of people talk about the street, from the property line, from the property line.
We are 10-foot back, 10 to 15-foot.
I, I want to know exactly how far back are you from the property?
So on one corner, it's 10-foot, and on the other corner, it's 12-foot, 4 inches.
So it's.
It looks even, but the way the hill, the hill comes up, the hill, from the road, it looks perfectly even. But the way the hill comes up on the lot, we want it, you know, the, the fencer pulled the line, and it looks straight, but it's straight from kind of the hill. So one side is 10-foot, and the other side is 12-point.
From the property line.
That is from the property line. That is the setback.
Right, see?
Just approximately.
Approximately 10 feet back from the property line. So that's not 15. And so to be in full compliance with the ordinance as it stands, here's what, here's what I'm not understanding. So there's, at some point, 13 to 15, 13 to 15 feet beyond that is where the 25-foot setback line is, correct?
Yes, you have to be 24 feet setback from your property line.
Right, so.
So from the road, there's already about 15 feet?
But that's.
But that's, I know.
That's irrelevant. Okay. Okay, and so if you struck a line, 25, at the 25-foot building setback line, which is what we're dealing with here in your particular case, then your fence is how wide?
It's 4 inches, something like that. But you have roots from trees and all the oak trees.
4 inches wide, and so if you, I'm not seeing where you're taking down dozens of trees to put a line across at 25-foot property line. I mean, I haven't been there, I haven't seen it. You don't have a tree survey, all that other kind of stuff. But I see fences, again, all over the island where there's trees that are right next to them, you know, you're not putting a post every. I'm, I'm just not seeing how that's, how, how that's necessarily destroying a bunch of trees or that couldn't be zigzagged around or what have you. And you also have a 25, well, you've got a zigzag on the side.
But you got a zigzag on the side already.
Yeah, but, but.
One, two, so that, yeah, but only one, so that we don't have a transformer, electrical transformer by a, by a pool. We were advised not to have that electrical transformer right on the corner by a pool.
Right.
That's the only reason that's there for safety.
Which is another question I have, but I, I'm trying to get it in my mind in terms of location and what, what your alternatives are. And so there's also an alternative, and the way I read the tree ordinance, which we happen to have a copy of in this packet, there's a flexible setbacks, a 25%, so that would be, you know, 6 and 1/4 in this instance.
18.75 would be the new front yard setback.
Would be the new front yard setbacks. Anywhere between there and whatever would give some leeway. Again, you, you could go anywhere from the 18 to back in terms of tree location. Like I said, I, I don't know where your trees are. I have been out there and measured it. I can't speak to that. But I'm just bringing. But I'm just bringing that up as a, something to, as an alternative.
We've, we've looked at it, we'd love for you to come see it, trees don't grow on a straight line.
I, I, I understand that, my-
Unfortunately.
If, if you, uh, drive by where I live, you'll know that I, I get that, because it's completely wild. Uh, I live in the jungle, is what a lot of people tell me.
I love that.
And, and we're asking for either or, if, if you don't all agree with, you know, amending the seven point eight point three for the whole island, then that's why we also propose the language for the eight point one four point four, for the, the traditional through lot definition. Um, since we're not, we don't fall under that traditional through lot. I was opposing, or we were, um, asking for language to add in to the ordinance, to apply to non-traditional through lots, which is what our-
And, and, if I may, if it gets to that point, um, I think the traditional, non-traditional is not the appropriate language. It's what the lot, the original platted. So, so, you know, those lots out in the beach area that all of this code was written around are, were originally platted that way. So, so everything else on the island, if you have a situation where it's possible to get a double frontage lot, that's not going to be an original plat. If you were to replat those lots as a, you know, that, that's not an original plat. So something in terms of that technical nature of the language would, would be a better, better application of that. Um, now, my other question is, there, there is a gate on the Sixteenth Street side.
Yes.
And that gate is how?
Ten feet.
Ten feet, so you could drive a car through there?
It's for equipment, yeah, in the event, because, yeah, we have a pool on northeast Seventeenth Street.
There's no way to access it.
Landscaping, if we want to bring mulch in or, um, have any, yeah, any type of, um-
But how, how would you, how would you have done that if you didn't have that lot behind?
We would have had to have done it before the pool went in, or by wheelbarrow.
Okay, alright.
We've done a lot by wheelbarrow, up our hill, up our driveway.
Yeah, it's, we're on a-
And we're not getting any younger.
Yeah.
Right.
That was our thought, honestly, was just to have an access that would be easier for us to bring in rock and trees and, um, mulch, that we wouldn't wheelbarrow it up the northeast Seventeenth Street driveway, which is quite steep, um, around the pool and then into the lot. So we wanted to make a opportunity for us to have a little less intensive labor.
Well, and now with the pool and the pool equipment's on the side and that gate is no longer, that's just a utility.
Well, and of course, the, the next storm could take down some of those trees and whatnot as well. Um, and even the neighbor's trees protecting, all that kind of thing, you know, that. I had the same thought that, that Tim mentioned, uh, I'm walking out on my porch this morning, I'm thinking, well, what if I had a six foot wall going all the way to the property line on the house next door to me? I wouldn't like it.
Yeah, sure.
I certainly wouldn't. Um-
Well, there's not, y'all bought that, y'all bought Malcolm, that was the, that was the lower lot on Malcolm's property?
It's not, it was not Malcolm's.
It wasn't Malcolm's.
No.
He had three lots, but that is not-
So you got a vacant lot beside that fence?
It's a half lot.
A vacant half lot, and my-
The vacant half lot.
From a real estate-
Right.
Perspective, does that diminish the, the value of the lot? If somebody were looking to buy a lot to build on, if there was a fence that went all the way out to the road?
Right.
So that would be another consideration.
Well, and again, uh-
That's a good point.
At some, you know, lots, half lots, all that stuff can be recombined, redone.
That lot can't be separated.
But that's, but that's still-
If it's a half, I'm on the lot and a half, so if it's a half lot-
We looked at it, actually, we were going to purchase his house, um, because we thought his lot, uh, maybe we could somehow make that work, um, but his, uh, it's on a lot and a half. That lot cannot be separated out, but the other lot could on the other side, where he had his basketball goal or whatever.
Right.
Uh, for this, and I fully understand where you're coming from, if you're sitting on your porch, but it's twenty-five foot difference, right? So your, your neighbor can already erect a fence all the way to the twenty-five foot setback, six foot. So you're only talking about twenty-five feet.
But that's a twen- that's a twenty five-
I know, but it, no, in the front, you can go all the way to the twenty-five foot setback with the six foot fence.
How mu- how much would you lose if it was in compliance?
Yeah, well, my house is already at twenty-five, that's not an issue.
How far back would the fence have to be moved to bring it into compliance?
Fifteen feet on average.
Then you would lose fifteen feet?
But then we would need to cut down the oak trees.
Again, again, there's the, the issue of how you might be able to weave through those trees with the flexible setback, but we're still talking about addressing a single situation. We're not thinking in terms of all of the lots out there, how, what kind of potential is there for having through lots?
I wouldn't want to-
What do you, what, how, how do you, how do you address, and that, those kinds of issues to me are, are a variance issue.
Right.
Uh, so how, how does this make things better or worse for the property owners or neighbors? Anywhere in any other area of town where there's the possibility of buying adjoining lots that create a double frontage through lot? I mean, that's, that's the real question.
Yeah, and that's, is this, can you not do something that's going to affect the entire island and just in this particular case?
No, not without a var- that's the variance.
Would, would, I mean, would that get us through where we're trying to get to with the fence that's-
We don't do variances, board of adjustments does vary.
Variance is the only way they could do that.
We were advised that variances may not be the best path to go, because they're not granted very often.
And, and you have to have a hardship, but you do have trees that you're trying to save. So you do have something that you could go with.
Yeah.
And, but there's several things you gotta meet to get a variance. But that is the answer to your question, that you're asking for variance, you're asking for just them to bend the rules for them only and not for the whole island.
I mean, is that, would that be like, as, as long as you own the property, or, I mean, are there stipulations that exist?
The variance goes with the land, runs with the land.
Runs with the land?
Yes.
Yeah.
So may I pose a question? So if, if we were looking at the only purpo- uh, changing the proposed language for eight point one, eight point one four point four, which would only, um, relate to through, non-traditional through lots or, or, or traditional through lots, which are corner lots or on, on the beach side, um, what percentage of lots are left on this island that somebody could buy the lot behind them and actually utilize that?
Well, and there are a lot of older homes that people could buy and tear it down and do all kinds, I mean, there, there are-
There would have to be two lots, right?
Yeah.
So is it a, is it fifty percent, ten percent, one percent, what's the true?
There, period.
You know, it would have to be the kind of-
That's hard to, because I know right now.
Yeah.
I would like to, you know, we, we keep talking about uniformity with the town and one size fits all and, and obviously they have something that doesn't fit all. And they are specifically addressing these types of non-traditional lots that they, that has been created. It's, it's just not the traditional lot, and it's specific to those lots. It's, would not impact other through lots with this language. Just, just wanting to put that out there.
Well, and, and I'm, I am concerned as has been pointed out, um, you know, I think that, that the, if you were going to, to look at that and try to narrow that down and think about, but then again, think about, um, houses that are built on either side of that. You know, you've, yeah, the situation you've got now, they've got that lot and a half, so it's not like, you know, right up in their face, what about areas where you don't have that? Um, I guess what I'm trying to say is, I think for, there, there needs to be some more work with this. I think the language in terms of the traditional, non-traditional needs to be, uh, stated in terms of original plats. However, that would be done, and I, we can't sit here and, you know, do it online. And, and if, if, if y'all, um, you know, things are on hold in terms of the code enforcement issue until we can resolve this to the point where we feel comfortable sending it forward to, planning, to a town council for the final decision, uh, and I assume that you wouldn't mind waiting on that. Okay.
Yeah, all, all enforcement actions are stayed, whether-
Are stayed until, until that's resolved. And so there's, one thing that I see is, again, how it's couched in terms, I'd rather use something in terms of original plat. I think that makes it clear, uh, because there are a lot of what some people might try to interpret as non-traditional lots in other areas besides just this. I'm also not comfortable with taking out the, uh, changing the language in seven eight, point eight point three. I think something needs to be addressed somewhere as an exception or specific, but that opens up in my mind a whole can of worms for, and we're, you know, going through U D O on it, uh, or starting to sometime soon. And so there are other places I think that we may not have captured in terms of, uh, what you're trying to, to accomplish. Um, does that make sense so far, Steve?
It, it, it does, and, um, this has brought like, uh, uh, brought to light, uh, some things that we, Jake, not Jake, that Wes has earmarked for review.
Yeah, and, and I'd also hope that we can get some explanation in terms of, of the differences between what's proposed and what staff is recommending, and maybe we'll have somebody else in place that will take care of all that and just wear one hat as we go through whatever we're considering, um, so that we're all hearing all the same thing. I think that would be appreciated by everyone.
Yes.
Okay, um, and quite frankly, I would like to come out and take a look at how the tree situation is going with the flexible setback piece before we move forward on that, but, uh-
Yeah, the good thing is not twenty feet. The good thing is not a twenty foot wall.
Yeah, well, and, and something else, Steve, in terms of, of all this discussion for staff to look at, because where I'm going with this is, y'all are gonna bring us back some amendments to the amendments, taking these things into consideration for our next meeting, okay? Um, if that is consensus of the board, I don't think we need a, everybody okay with that?
Okay with what?
Looking at, uh, altering, you know, looking at taking out, not making a change to seven point eight point three, uh, looking at rewording the proposed language for eight fourteen four, uh, using something related to original plats versus traditional, non-traditional. Um, and then picking that up as well in the definition. And something else, Steve, that I think bears taking a look at, and that is, um, particularly with the, the solid, the larger solid fencing, um, you know, while I was looking through this, I started looking at what is in the code for the privacy wall. Um, and it references the twenty-five feet back from the, you know, thing too. And so in some sense, this is a privacy wall, although it, is it a wall, is it a fence? And we, I know we've, I don't want to open up that whole can of worms again, but, uh, I think that's another place to check the language in terms of seeing how a change in this would impact that piece of it. See, there's a lot of different dots throughout the code that, that deal with all these kinds of issues. And I want to make sure that we're not creating another problem.
Well, they're limited to six feet in height anyway, privacy walls now.
But-
Right.
Yeah.
I can see, yeah.
But still, the twenty-five feet is still, right. Uh, so there's some language in there that seems to relate to that.
Okay.
And, um, the other thing while we're, while we're in this, and this, again, may be something that does or doesn't come up in the audit, but while we are talking fences, um, and that's an accessory structure freestanding, I think, is the category, and there's some, there may be some language in that that needs to be, um, addressed in terms of clarification.
Okay.
And, and how, you know, how it applies to fences, but not other freestanding structures. I'm not, you know, there, there's opportunity for conflicts. And I think we have tried to, as we're going along making amendments, first of all, make it crystal clear what you're enforcing and not to create conflicts and not have that, uh, interpretation, uh, available to you, quite frankly. Cause that makes your job easier, not that we don't trust you.
Yeah, that's why we tried to be specific on double frontage lot and through lot. It's not a traditional lot versus a non-traditional lot, it's a, it's a double, it's contiguous to two street corners, the front lot shall, that's the corner lots, but we're, we're really trying to focus in on this, uh, yeah, on being able to define something for-
Those interior lots, but, but then again, it's still in keeping with thinking about how this might not be the only one, and even if it's only a three or four more, depending on where they are and what the adjoining properties are, that can have a huge impact. And so we want to be mindful of that if we can.
Sure.
Alright.
It's hard to make a, a rule that applies to every single lot on this island, I can imagine.
That's why we have different rules for different areas, uh.
Yeah, that's why we focused on our area.
And still try to, uh, still try to comply with the general look and feel of the town.
Yeah, you don't have an easy job.
Alright.
And thank you so much for your time, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
And maybe one last statement, if you think about spending hundred thousand dollars on your, of your hard earned money on a lot for a backyard, um, and even moving another ten feet back, you lose how many square feet of your yard? It's still not the most appealing. Um, but, look, we, we hope that you can see, uh, or that you've given us an opportunity to put some additional language in to maybe make it more palatable and applicable.
And, and understand, I don't know that that's gonna work.
Sure.
Uh, but I'm, I've always been willing to try and take a second look at language. We-
We've had a, uh, a s- situation recently where we tried to make some changes in the language and still did not ultimately, uh,
Achieve it.
Achieve the results that the applicant desired, so we make no promises, but I'm willing to take a look at it.
Thank you so much, we, we really appreciate it.
Alright.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you. Got everything you need, Steve?
I, sorry.
You have everything you need?
I think so. I, I made some notes. I'll get with the new planner.
Yeah, give him to him.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. We appreciate your time.
Alright, um, next item on the agenda is a discussion of tree protection ordinances specifically- Next item on the agenda is a discussion of tree protection ordinances specifically. Yes.
My microphone is in my way every time I turn to page, sorry.
Specifically, this was ultimately, and you've got the emails in your packet. Councilmember Bach had said something, mentioned something to me about one of our resident citizens who had emailed council and then he forwarded that email to me. And I thought rather than just me, I would put it on the agenda so that we could all see that, particularly given our discussion recently about trees in the front yard and that type of thing. From what I, I tried to, and y'all are certainly welcome to see something else in this, but in, in reviewing Mr. Williams, and he, by the way, could not, had hoped to be here today, but could not be here today. He has a property in Virginia that was requiring some electrical and plumbing work that he needed to schedule and could only schedule at this time, so. But again, you know, in, in looking through this, particularly the email to council, it seems like the two, two major, or the, the one major issue is about trees in the front yard, trying to keep some front yard trees, which is a discussion we had in our last meeting relating to the, that, the orchard subdivision. And I'll just say that to begin with and ask if, before I come back to some other things I might ask Steve about, just ask for your questions, comments.
Derek and I did have a conversation last week as to some of the items that she would like for me to put together. And I have done that. And she's also wanted me to sort of go through the permitting process for a development permit. All right. For some reason, my computer is dyslexic and likes to put the staple top right in instead of top left. I'll try to top right next time. But the, the first item in the little package I handed out is the procedure guides and applications for a development permit. It's pretty self-explanatory. I did make some corrections to the third, actually page two, the verses was the guide and the permit application is page one on page two. The lower part, I inserted the new language that was adopted. There was, the old language was still in there and I, I updated that. Thank you, Derek, for catching that.
Yeah, that was going to be one of my questions. I'm glad to see you've done that.
Okay, we'll scratch that one.
Okay.
And also, you know, the, you know, development permitting process is, is done before they're issued any building permits or before they can submit any building permits. They have to submit a development permit application. In that development permit application, there are guidelines that you have to meet, survey requirements showing a placement of all development, all proposed development, whether it's a swimming pool, house, whatever their building, they need to show on the development permit for new construction. Existing homes, they add accessory structures, it's a little different. So, so this development permit is, is specific for new development of a vacant lot. The vegetation and tree ordinance requirements are very long and, but specific. And what we require that they provide for the tree and vegetation portion of this is a vegetation plan, site plan. And they can, it doesn't have to be done by a land surveyor or, you know, so we, we work with them. And that'll bring me to the, the second staple package. These I printed straight off of the computers, not the computer, but the printer, so it, it's not as dyslexic. But on the, in the application, there's a tree and vegetation worksheet in the packet, the first packet. And this was one that was submitted and it, it's for an address where something was looked at not too long ago where the developer and he clear cut what appeared to be the whole lot. Now, you know, the first page here, tree and vegetation worksheet, it wants to know type of work, new home construction. So we know he's going to build a new house. And with that, it's driveway, house, stormwater, and all that has to be shown on the survey. Well, the second page that I attached to this one, it shows his tree and vegetation plan. Now, he has gone and identified all the little dots, his trees that were there, and he said he's clearing all of those. And what he's keeping is 10 trees in the back. And he put up there, oaks or Xs will be kept and pines or Os to be kept. And the little dots all out in the front are to be cleared. So all he was keeping was that group of trees in the back portion of that property. And that's why it appears to be clear cut.
Can I interrupt you right here?
Sure.
Okay, so the way I understand the amendments that we made to the ordinance that we have that got approved by council last summer is that any tree that's two-inch caliber or higher that's existing is protected unless it gets, unless and until it gets a permit for an essential site improvement that allows it to be cut. Now, essential site improvements were those that required a permit. So I can see on the survey, there appears to be, you know, several things on here that require a permit, the driveway, the stormwater trench, the house, et cetera. But there's an awful lot of area around that that does not have an essential site improvement that requires a permit. And while 10 is the minimum, that doesn't mean if you actually had existing trees there that it's okay to cut them down.
That's one way to read it.
That is, and, and, and that may very well be an interpretation issue, but that is exactly the way it was explained to us when we were going through that process, is that's what we were getting. Now, granted, once that C O is issued, they can clear cut the whole lot and there's nothing we can do about it. And I have always maintained that until we do something with that, that we're just going around in circles.
Well.
But.
I'll tell you how staff's interpreted this. And, and site, it, it clearly states, if trees are located where permit required site improvements were proposed, the minimum restocking level required will be dependent upon the tree credit calculation table. The applicant wants an open yard. He's got to remove trees. So technically, that's a permit that's required to go in there to create that open yard because he's got to do tree removal. Now, if we don't want people to have open yards, you know, we need to reword this better because that, that, that would trigger a permit. He wants that open yard, he shows he's got an open yard, he's showing the trees he wants to remove to have that open yard. He has met the minimum on this particular one.
Where do we have, do we have an open yard permit? I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm doing the devil's advocate thing here.
And I appreciate that. I'm doing the same. But the development permit, that, yeah, it doesn't say, there's no one for an open yard, but there is one for new development. And this new development, he's doing, he's, he's, he's got to provide us a tree and vegetation plan. He's showing us where he's going to do his driveway, he wants a driveway, access to property. He's showing where his stormwater is going, he's showing where his house is going. And now he's also showing that he wants his front yard free of trees. The ordinance really doesn't say that he can't remove those trees as long as he meets the minimum. This is where we may differ in interpretations. And, but, you know, if we start requiring a percentage of trees to canopy, more so than the number of trees, which was looked at a while, I think 2015, 16, somewhere along those lines when we looked at the canopy ordinance, or maybe later. Lisa has done a spreadsheet on just the dates and time.
Yeah, I just have a list of the dates and times.
List, right.
Still compiling, we've, we've amended the tree ordinance.
Yeah.
Quite a few times.
Quite a few times, yeah. Twice a year, maybe. Yeah, as I was printing all this paper, I was thinking about the poor trees as well. But that's, that's how staff is looking at it. Now, to rectify that, you know, if you start saying that a percentage of that number of trees must be maintained in the front yard, in the rear yard, side yards are going to be difficult because once you, the, as you can see here, that he, he's sat back a little bit farther than the 10-foot corner lot setback. But then he's got that stormwater system in there. Trees, stormwater and structures do not play well together. You normally don't want a tree within 12 feet of a foundation or driveway. That's just construction.
And there's houses all over this island that have them closer than that and everything is just fine.
Yeah, and I, and I've got some facial and roofing damage that I had to fix or still pending to fix from Hurricane Isaiah. It's not leaking, but that tree beat the side of my house and my, my yard, I've, I've got a plethora of trees. I got a plethora of trees in my yard, front, back and side. And the side tree is what beat my house up. I still, I went up there and I trimmed the limbs and it snapped the top out, but I didn't cut the tree down. But that's my preference.
Right.
This, this owner, and like I said, good construction standard practice is you don't want a, a tree within 12 feet of a foundation of a house or a driveway. Root balls go up there and can bust up the driveway. The household pylons, you don't have as much problem with the tree, but when they're putting stormwater such as this along the side of the house, you don't want trees growing into your stormwater system. That used to be a problem with septic systems.
Yeah.
But the, the staff had approved this based off of, he was able to show his development, that he was being permitted, open yard, driveway, stormwater house, and he met the requirements for the trees.
Something else that seemed to be saying in the email about the, there's maybe some, some confusion in, in reading the ordinance and interpretation, but in other words, if there are existing trees on the lot, regardless of where they're located, that meet the minimum, then you're not required. It's not like you can clear cut it if there are, like I said, trees on the lot that qualify count, for, for the, the minimum requirement. Then, as the code is now, it's another interpretation thing. So that was one piece of it, the whole yard thing. And, and we've gone through that. But can somebody clear cut a lot and say, well, I'm just going to plant back 10 trees?
We, we normally don't allow that. That's, you know, that, that.
Normal.
Yes. But you'll see, some, some people are seeking forgiveness, I think was something that said earlier than permission. And it, and the contractor, we find him as much as possible and we double feed him on his permits and he just wrote the check.
Yeah.
It didn't bother him, you know? So, so there, there's some of that going on and we're trying to, and that's why I say normally we don't do it and that's, we, we.
You don't, you don't, you don't permit it.
Yeah, we don't permit that. But if they can save a tree, they can save a tree, is, is how we look at it.
It doesn't mean that that isn't happening.
No, it does not.
But it's not, it's not with a blessing of a permit saying it's okay.
Yeah. I did discuss with this with Wes and he's very prolific with other ordinances, may not have been the right word, but anyway, the, the thing that he said is that other municipalities, they'll say no tree removal outside the building envelope. So the required yard area. So anything in that front 25-foot yard setback other than for driveway purposes, side yard, rear yard cannot be removed. So that, you know, that's how other municipalities have addressed it. You know, a percentage of canopy was how the town had looked at it at one time, not the tree count, but the canopy.
You could have one tree.
Right.
Depending on the, the, of course, if something happens to that one tree, then you're out. But you could have one tree that provides more canopy than.
And then, and the, and the way the tree canopy ordinance read, it was at maturity too. So you could plant, you know, an oak tree and, and just have that one oak tree in the front yard. And when it finally grew to maturity is where you, you, and you had to maintain it.
Yeah, but there again, if you can cut everything with a C O, it's irrelevant.
I want to segue back into the, the process real quick. So we get the application that's submitted. And then once it's been submitted, staff reviews it for compliance. If they don't, if it's got missing information, of course, we send it back. And once we consider it complete, they'll go out and do a site visit. They'll go out there and look at the trees because the contractors are supposed to flag all the trees that he's either going to save or remove. We, we, we don't ask them to flag both. So normally they flag the ones that are going to save. We also, while we're out there, we look at the road frontage too. And we'll take photographs of the lot and the road frontage to be sure that if there's any damage that we noted in the beginning of the permit, because we're going to hold that contractor responsible for any damage to public infrastructures, whether it be the road, the sidewalk, and hold up the C O until they have that. So once there, the, the staff member is, sees that it's compliant, we'll issue that development permit. And then, of course, it goes through the building process and sometimes tractor backs over a tree and, and it's, happens. And of course, we hold up C O at the final until we approve the tree plan that was provided. And if it doesn't meet that, we don't hold the, we hold it up. I withheld a C O on a, on a property because they planted nine trees. They didn't meet the breast height requirement. The owner was upset with me and I explained to him, I said, well, you paid for breast height, two inches, 12-foot tall trees.
That's not what you got.
That's not what you got. That contractor came back and planted nine more trees, didn't take the other one. So now they have 18 trees in that yard. And, but, you know, so it, it's, it's difficult when you've got a property owner that, I'm holding a C O up on their house, they've already spent a bunch of money on trees. But we, we do enforce these as to how staff is interpreting these ordinances. And, and of course, that's where we need to work on them. If, if the objective here is to, is to not just have them shove 10 trees on the back left-hand corner of the yard and say, I've met the minimum ordinance requirement. And, you know, reducing it down to two inch, that now, you know, it, good and bad, that gives more trees to maybe save, but bigger trees that we can lose, that the specimen trees that we had at one time. And, and we do need to, you know, proceed, you know, with caution because there's been a bill in the state legislatures twice now and it's sitting in some committee where they sent it to die, but they're.
Well, and, and all you have to do, in other words, you'd have to get local act to have any kind, it doesn't say what's in the tree ordinance.
That's correct. That may be something that.
And that is something that I have encouraged council to do for some time now and there's been no movement on that. So that'd be it.
Okay. You got any more on that? Because I, I did get to the land use plan and the implementation that you had asked about.
Go ahead.
Okay. And, and one of the other items that Ms. Royal had asked that I'd look at was the goals and implementation action plans in our land use plan. And, and chapter five is, or. And, and chapter five is, or section five is, is where you find those plans and, and, and actions. And I just went through and I, and I snapped out the ones that talked about the trees and vegetation. It's, it's about a 40-page section. And of course, if you look on the first page here, which is five dash six, it's number seven item was tree canopy preservation. That's protection, well, that's environmental preservation. And then, of course, number nine is environmental protection. And they go hand in hand, really. So, so it was addressed in here that we wanted to look at tree canopy preservation. Of course, there were some pictures in there, so I left them in there. They looked nice. Some nice palm trees in there. And the, the top right-hand picture is actually here on Oak Island. Some of the other pictures are not, as you can tell. But it just, like with the commercial development, you can see where they're planting the trees and the highlands and all that. And I guess y'all have seen the, um, new brewery going up down there and all the trees they planted around that down there in the old Joe Pond section. And, and of course, the Paul's place over here, he's planted a bunch of trees and some nice oaks as well. And that was a requirement for him to do that change of use. And of course, then again, it just talks about the goals. And I meant to flag the one that said trees here on the third page.
Yeah, Steve in particular from the land use plan, on the last two pages that you've copied here, the 526, down at the bottom, corporate tree ordinance crafted with assistance of the forestry.
Yeah.
Service. And then it lists, you know, the ordinance would be the backbone of a program which will. And then you've got those, most of the rest of the page is the, uh, open dot bullet points, uh, for what would be in that reference to working with the, uh.
And, and we did.
Forestry service. And so, if you could tell us a little bit about the history of, we've already been through that process.
We, we did, we did. We held several meetings and, and I was trying to find, Jake had actually created a time, timeline showing all the meetings and hearings that we'd done. It was part of the grant program we had to provide.
Yeah, we had a grant, we, somebody came in, did all that, there was a.
Lengthy program and, you know, on the kickoff meeting, they had asked, is it tree count or canopy that we were wanting? And the response was canopy. So it was a tree canopy they were looking for. And that's because she said it depends on count canopy as to how she'll draft the, the recommendations for the ordinance. So the consensus was canopy. So that's why she drafted the ordinance the way she did. And it started out that you had to maintain 55% canopy. And if development would prevent that, then there was a buy-down, so to speak, where you could buy down the canopy. And, um, you could buy it down pretty much, you know, to, to get what you needed. But those, that buy-down, those funds would go into a, a account that was designated for planting trees elsewhere on public properties, not private properties. So we would enhance other areas to compensate for the loss of the tree. Now, as Ms. Royal pointed out a little earlier in our conversation, was that the difference with canopy is it could be one tree. And it's just, it's the coverage that you get.
Did, did that ordinance, because I don't, quite frankly, I don't ever remember seeing the, or having a copy of the final draft of that. And wasn't on any town boards at the time, so, but, um.
No, it was.
But did, did it address anything about trees in the front setback? You know, there's, there's, there's the, there's the number, there's the canopy, but then more and more the issue I hear for our residents and citizens and whatnot are, uh, the streetscape.
Right.
So that's, that seems like a, maybe related, but it's different if you're really going for that. Was there anything about that in that proposed ordinance that never really saw the light of day?
I would, I would, I would have to go back and reread that. And I can get the board a copy of that as well. So, you know, could look at it and figure it out. But it, it talked about canopy and it was hard to meet that 55% without putting trees in the front and the side. And, uh, but, you know, again, the driveway would take up for it. And you didn't get a whole credit for a tree. If it's set on the corner of that property, it, it pied out. So if you only had a quarter of that tree on your property, the other three quarters was over on the adjoining properties.
I think some of that is, maybe there's a simple way to enforce it. Maybe they've got something that works for them in Charlotte, but.
It was, it was a very large document. It was, um, 70-some pages if I remember correctly.
But it seemed to be difficult in terms of actually figuring out what all that was. And there again, that would have required, uh, tree maintenance requirements after the CO was issued.
That's correct.
And that has always been the deciding factor in doing anything, to any extent, more than what we already have.
There was a retention requirement and there was also in there, uh, permit requirements to remove trees to, on developed properties. But the consensus of the council at that time was they didn't want to.
Not going to happen.
Yeah.
There has never been any political will to do that.
Right.
Doesn't mean that won't change, but.
So unfortunately, staff gets beat up all the time over this.
And, 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 and if anything that I have said during this meeting comes across that way, know that it's not and I apologize. I'm just trying to have the discussion of, so you can respond to what we've all been hearing out there.
I appreciate discussion, so.
Michael, thoughts, suggestions?
Um, one example I got, Josh Crooks building a house beside me and he saved a real big tree in the front yard. Saved a bunch of trees on the back. He did a great job. And so I think they are trying to save trees.
They are, they are. They're, they're, and then you do have a few, I mean, we have some really good contractors. Some of them, you know, it costs to take, take a tree down. So, you know, especially the bigger the tree, the more expensive it is. And I think that was, you know, the case just mentioned earlier about, you know, the cost to remove the trees. It's the development that gets in the way of the trees. And if, if we look at it, I would say, you know, let's look at requiring certain percentage of trees in the front yard.
Would it be a percentage or would it be a number, Steve?
30%?
30% is going to give you for.
Three trees in the front yard? If it's a 10, if it's a 10-yard requirement.
But like I said, do you, I guess you use the percentage so that it, the number changes depending on this. If the lot, if the lot is bigger because it's deeper, that's one thing. If a lot is bigger because it's wider. So we've got 55-foot lots over here, we've got 60-foot lots over here. So maybe even, you know, you see what I'm saying in terms of the.
That, right, right.
Whether it's a number or a percentage and what difference that would make in terms of, you know, if you had 60 feet, then maybe three makes sense. If you had 55, maybe only two makes sense.
Well, that would be a minimum.
Do you go with a number or with a, with a percentage?
You know, that would be a minimum.
We need to look at the.
Right.
Right.
The, uh, you know, if we did a percentage again, that would be the minimum amount of trees. If somebody pushes their house back to get a bigger front yard.
Right.
They still got to have that same number of trees. So they might wind up with, you know, 50% of the trees in the front yard.
Well, and, and the, trying to encourage people to do more than the minimum is another issue.
That'd be hard.
Anything else, Michael?
I, no, I think we need to go on like Steve's recommendation because he's in, he's in the trenches every day.
Well, in staff report, I might jump in here if you don't mind. We do have a new planner we've hired. He's going to be starting May 31st. He's, um, he's got a great background. He's been in government for a while now. He's, he's actually even, I think he's got a, maybe a concentration in economic development. So he's, he's well-rounded and I'm looking forward to working with him and.
Well, if he's going to be here on the 31st, that gives him plenty of time to bring us back some amendments in our GME meeting.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
He may be watching today too, so.
My non-scientific observations over, over the years is I think it's getting a little bit better, but we got a long ways to go. And I, I remember our chair saying just a, a year or two ago, well, we've worked this over so many times. She's right, but I think we've got to keep working it over. And the idea of bringing some of it into the front yard, which is not that tough for the builders to do. I've, I've talked to more than one builder and there are some builders that already are doing that. But there's some recalcitrants that don't. And that might be the next stage in, in the evolution of our tree ordinance.
They also have to have something to work with, but, um, yeah, I distinctly remember some conversation, uh, during our last time that we spent on this about the piece in the code, we just left it as is, where there's more trees in the front, they get a wave to.
If they plant five trees, I believe.
Whatever, which.
$100, they get this development fee.
Which is totally useless. But it's a feel-good thing that council put in there several years ago and we didn't take it out. My intent of leaving it in there was to be able to come back and put something in that actually results in some front yard trees, uh, which I think is what we're talking about trying to maybe move forward with doing. So I'll just say that.
I mean, it, you don't even have to be a percentage, you can come up with a number. You know, that a minimum of three trees must be pre-planted, it must be planted in the front yard.
Yeah, I, I, I think it might be helpful and since we did more of a broad scope. I mean, let's, you know, do the chart on the square footage and, and, you know, see if something like I was talking about, if you've got more street frontage, are you trying to get, are you trying to do it based on street frontage? Or are you trying to do it based on square footage? A percentage of the lot, of the number that's based on the square footage of the lot? So it seems to me like we might want to look at how much frontage do you have to work with?
Just, on the standard lots, 55 by 25, that's 1,375 square feet. So, and it's two trees for 1,450 square feet. So I'd say.
So you'd have two trees.
You'd have to do two trees.
Right.
At minimum.
Yeah.
And that, that might be a way to look at it is, is to, instead of pushing them all in the back.
Right. Well, and, and when we were getting, when we're, we're getting palm trees and they still get some palm trees, but they can put those in too. We were getting two in the front. I mean, that's what they were doing. Tim, anything?
And it might just be my limited understanding, but I remember back when we were having to put septic systems in all the, on all the properties here. The builders were saying, well, you know, we, we got to put the drain field in, so we got to cut all the trees out of the backyard. And then we got the sewer system and when the sewer system came in, people were like, okay, we can start saving our trees. And then they came in with the storm.
Yeah, we got to have stormwater.
And from what I understand, and it, like I said, it's maybe, I may be just ignorant, but, um, I'm from Raleigh and it's very clay. I mean, there's no, there, there's more runoff than there is absorption. And here with the porous soil that we, with the sand that we've got, I've had builders tell me that they cut down trees. They say, I know I'm cutting down a tree that will use more water than this thing that I'm putting in the ground to. So whatever we would have to do to get somebody to consider what we have here on the coast and how much water is absorbed, how fast after a storm, they should be able to give us an exception on some of this, some of these requirements that we're required to.
And that is state regulation. And the other thing that we run into is groundwater coming up, not, you know, the, yeah. And, and I think the town has talked with the state about some of the stormwater regulations and what we have to do. And they basically told us we need to be glad that we're not required to do any more than we are. But that doesn't mean that you don't keep pushing that issue. And, and, yeah, as I understand it right now, basically, trees don't count in terms of the stormwater calculations, which is nonsensical to me. Now, granted, granted, you know, on the coast hurricanes one thing or another, they, uh, you know, trees sometimes are destroyed. Very small percentage, I think, compared to what we have. But again, if you're going to tie it to stormwater and you've got an ordinance that doesn't require retention after the CO, then it shouldn't count for stormwater. Plain and simple.
And y'all may have seen a house that sits on a corner.
Gets back to retention.
Really? The house that sits on the corner, I'm not going to say the address. After, they've been in there for maybe pushing a year, they went in there and just cleared every tree.
Cleared every bit of it, yeah.
Every bit of it.
So if you've got a stormwater permit based on tree retention and you're not requiring those trees to be retained, no one in the state says, forget it. Yeah, you can't, if, if you can't do those two, then the trees are never going to count towards stormwater, even though everybody knows that that has a better impact than what we're putting in the ground for stormwater. But we don't require retention, so that's not going to fly.
The, the, the stormwater is, it's, it's about water quality. It's not about retention.
Right, right.
It's about filtering that first one and a half inch runoff. It doesn't say you've got to retain it.
Nope.
It, it says you have to filter it before it leaves that site. So counting the trees again, you know, how quick, the ground soils you can absorb. You can count the soils.
Yeah, trees filter, even just coming through.
True, true.
Trees, trees do filter. And so it is a water quality as well as quantity issue. But there again, if you, if you clean that inch and a half and you're cleaning, what's cleaning that? Then the groundwater comes up and flushes it all out. What have you accomplished? Nothing.
Plus the popcorn that blows up out of the ground on the oceanfront and goes out to sea.
That, that.
Solve the stormwater issue.
We've got a new stormwater administrator director and he's doing a great job. That was one of the first things he stopped was those, um, easy flow chamber systems that were being put in. Popcorn.
Anything else, Tim? Bob?
I'll, I'll be quick. So I, you know, here we are, we're talking about trees again and probably rightfully so. This has been changes over the years. And even today, we have the chairman and the development services director maybe not even aligned on how we should be applying the rules we have. So, and, and it's very, gets very technical and so forth. But something as important as this and something that we hear public outcry as much as we do. And sometimes the public outcry is, is off-base and sometimes, you know, it's, they're just, their facts aren't right and other times they're legitimate complaints, right? So, um, later I'll talk about it in my board report, but I think we need to look at professional, you know, not that we haven't had professional, uh, expert input before, but maybe we need to do it again. Um, around, okay, requiring trees. Well, the next step is where did you put them? In the front and the back and, and on and on and on and how many? And, and what's the impact of the stormwater as, as Tim says? Because sometimes you can kill two birds with one stone. So, um, I think professional analysis time is probably here for, for the tree issues and needs. And then secondly, looking at it from a stakeholder perspective. When you guys were talking about the side yards and back and rear, well, if the house isn't as big as people are proposing, then there's more room to put the trees. So, you know, it's, it's, when you look at it from the perspective of what the owner wants versus the developer wants versus what the town as a whole wants. So it's sort of a, a stakeholder analysis point of view maybe, maybe needed. I don't have the answer today.
Thank you, Bob. Anything else? Trying to wrap this up. I think as I, I said before, when you mentioned the new planner, most of what we hear about is the, and what seems to be the, the, uh, the. most of what we hear about is the, and what seems to be the, the, the major issue for folks is the front yard and requirements in the front yard for trees. So Steve, I think we would ask that that we see something, some, some suggestions for directions to go, proposals, what have you, of how to address retaining some of the trees that we require to be in the front yard, if that could be. Certainly, I, I think we'd all like to see that sooner rather than later, but I don't know what's coming down the pike. And I know we've got somebody new coming on board, but it shouldn't be, take that gentleman that long to get up to speed.
Not at all.
And so, so hopefully we can see something that at least, because that's the one, like I said, that's the one piece of the ordinance that's there that we didn't try to do something more than an incentive. And I think it's time to put some requirements in place versus just the incentive to try and, and get those front yard trees. Is that, y'all agree? So that's consensus on at least that piece of it. I think the other, another thing that perhaps there's some tweaking in terms of whether you're, if out of the ten trees that you're saving, wherever you're saving, yes, a two-inch minimum, if it's an existing tree, could qualify. But that if you have trees that are...
Ugly?
That's what's saying to me is an ugly tree. If you have trees, so, so somebody's making a choice between a four-inch caliber tree and a two-inch caliber tree. That the four-inch caliber tree would be the one they'd choose to preserve. Now, I'm not sure, you know, out of all the trees that may be left after you get all these permits, then, then counting the trees that are preserved in some kind of order of size could, could both address the canopy in some ways, some other... Am I making, does that make any sense?
It's basically coming back to a specimen tree should be looked first at first.
Some kind of, some, some kind of prioritization in terms of sizes, just like we did now, because the existing, that, that, when you've got to replant, I want to leave that alone for a second because what we're hearing from is existing trees. And so I think those two things, preserving the existing trees in some kind of size scale as well as location, and then finding something, looking at some amendments for the front yard piece to start requiring something rather than just an incentive that we know is totally worthless. Okay? All right, everybody good? Okay. And I do want to thank Mr. Williams and Councilmember Bock for bringing these items to our attention in a detailed and, and logical way. And we will continue to also ask the, our new planner, you know, we, we've identified those two points. If there are other things in the email that we were discussing today that he sees that we're missing that could be impactful, then I'd want to know that too. All right. Board member reports. Michael? Lee? Tim? Bob, I know you have something for us.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I've provided a copy to everyone, so I won't actually read every word of it because it's not necessary. It's an easy read for you folks. But just the highlights. Asking that we propose, as, as a board, we ask the development manager and the new planner to propose, to write up a proposal change where we change the table of uses to restrict drive-throughs from the CB district. And so I've got a little mark up there of what it would look like. Basically, take the S out of the CB section. And that would, you know, prevent drive-throughs on, basically, if you look at the map and you, you see where the CBs are, they're on island and CLB is sort of off island. And that's a proposed change to, the purpose, I think, is to better align the CB district with our UDO and, excuse me, with our land use plan. As Steve just showed us, that's a great couple of pages that he showed. And you can read the goals of the land use plan. It's a sort of a small-town feel and family beach atmosphere of what, what they sort of highlight as a couple of key words that the rest of the goals amount to. So I'd ask if we could maybe discuss that next meeting, if the time allows. The, the others, a couple of other things. So Brunswick County is, and I'll go quickly. Brunswick County is the fastest-growing county in, in North Carolina. We have been, our island faces enormous growth pressures. And we many times have to make decisions on small, small developments, let's say, like the nine-unit proposal last, last week, last meeting. But then there are huge ones, and, and there'll be more like Williamson and the next generation of the Williamson iteration and the future development within their eighty-five-hundred homes. And so I think we need to ask and require, and I think we need to explore how we can get more professional input and analysis. And just like we mentioned about the trees and maybe we need some more expert analysis outside engineering to help us, you know, with other people's learnings around the country and, and obviously expert technical opinions and knowledge. The other thing I'd mention, and I call it stating the obvious, but we, we've got three different kinds of, I'll posit that we have three different kinds of people on the island. We've got residents, you know, people who own their homes or people that rent, they, they live here. And then we've got businesses. They make their income or profit, you know, sort of one-time profit or, or, you know, ongoing income and that, we call those businesses. And then we have both, people who have businesses here, but they also live here. And when I say stating the obvious, we, it's our job and council's job, but I, I don't tell them what to do. But it's our job to balance th- those three groups in making our decisions. And since I've been on this board, I hear too often, well, that's what the ordinance says. We, we, we can't do anything else. That's what the ordinance says. And I call that playing the victim. And I think we need to work on our UDO. We probably need to work on the LUP. But we certainly need to work on the UDO and align it to the current LUP. I'd say in a better, a better fashion because the growth we're experiencing is, is, you know, quite substantial. And we're going to run out of time because the island's going to be built out before we make some of the changes people are clamoring for. So I, I, I call that attention. I call our attention to that. The next thing I'd like to ask, and, you know, may, oh, and perhaps, Steve, you, you talked about last meeting that we might have Wes here to talk about how he was going to do the UDO audit. And it's been a while now. I don't, don't know how long it even takes to do the UDO audit.
If, if you have anything else, Bob, let's go ahead and give what you have to say and let Steve give his staff report.
That'll be fine. Actually, that's great. So my questions really are, how does the, you know, how will the UDO audit go? Against what standard, if you will? Will we get, will we get him to highlight areas that don't conform or are not aligned with the land use plan? We talked about that last meeting. My questions today, I, I have a couple of questions, which is how does the Williamson tract meet, you know, and they delineate their open space requirement? So I went back to the, to the ordinance and it says they got to do, if I read it right, you know, fifteen percent gross acreage. How do they, how does that get delineated on their proposal? I've got a couple of other questions. I'll skip them for now. We can talk about them later or you can, you can answer them later. And then my last comment was, perhaps County Clerk Lisa Stites could answer. For the February meeting, I was told I couldn't attend remotely. You know, during COVID, we, we got to hold meetings and we talked about trees a lot of times over COVID, excuse me, over Zoom. And in February, I couldn't attend the meeting and I wanted to attend remotely and I was told I couldn't legally couldn't do it. But I was watching the town council meeting the other day and, you know, the mayor was to attend remotely. And I was wondering if we could understand the policy for going forward. Can board members attend remotely via, you know, remote technology, what the rule was? So that's my board report.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Steve, staff report?
Well, I already mentioned the new planner coming on board. His name is Matt Kirkland. He's, he's a current planner for a municipality in Brunswick County. He's bringing a lot of experience to the table. He's got a strong background, masters in public administration, very, very smart and eager man.
He's an AICP.
He is AICP.
AICP actor.
And I, I wouldn't say he's got his CZO and possibly CFM.
Right.
So, and he's, he was actually working with the municipality and coming on to the CRS program with the National Flood Insurance Program. So I, I, I think he's going to be a great addition. He's here to help this town grow and, and, and guide it through its growth and, and also build this department downstairs. Because it's, it's like Bob said, that, you know, we're a fastest-growing county. As to some of Bob's comments with the UDO audit, I really don't want to speak on the audit. I'd rather Wes give that information. I know he's going to, they're, they're going to look through the audit and look for inconsistencies that are conflicting with theirselves. And, and, and of course, we also checking to be sure that everything's consistent with the current general statutes. And beyond that, as to holding the meetings and with the planning board and stakeholders and that, that he'll need to address.
And there's a scope of work for the audit that was in the council packet when they did that. And I meant to, to ask you about, you know, printing that out if we didn't have anything else, but...
Lisa could probably speak better on...
I mean, it's still available in the agenda packet online for the council meeting.
Okay, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, no, that, that's fine. But I'll talk with the new planner about if it's a consensus of the board to move forward with some of Bob's agenda items here.
I think, I think certainly we can all agree that we'd like for the new planner to take a look at that and, and maybe respond back and have some more discussion on our June agenda. That'd be satisfactory with you, Bob.
When you say more discussion, what, what does that mean?
Well, it means if, for him, for our planner to, to look over this and respond to that in our next meeting. And maybe we have more discussion out of that.
I guess what I was asking was could we take it up as a proposal and, and discuss it and potentially vote on it? Or table it for the time and for more discussion? Or we're just going to discuss things next week?
Okay, okay. So as an alternative, is for us to just put it on as an agenda item for all of us to discuss in the next meeting? And then the planner would certainly have that to look over and could...
Well, that, that was what, what I was thinking.
I think that's a good idea.
That's fine. Then let's do that.
I mean, I take, I think the best we can do is when we get the most input. So I'd like to have Steve weigh in on it and the new planner weigh in on it. Absolutely fine.
So this is a board member report. We'll put that as an actual agenda item for discussion in our next meeting.
Thank you. That's what I was, obviously, I speak only as a member.
I understand. My bad. Yeah, because that's, that's what we did, Bob, is that what we did when you brought up the, about the electronic signs. We looked at something like this, then we put it on the agenda for general discussion and then we got some language back on it. Okay.
I think we can be more efficient and maybe approve this or, or not approve it faster. So.
Agreed. Okay. Anything else, Steve?
I, I have talked with Wes about, you know, because of the 160D changes and, and the way things have been restructured, putting on a workshop for the planning board. And he's looking at doing that as well. And that, that's something that'll be coming in and would like for everybody to be able to attend. Other than that, I mean, the council approved the nine-lot subdivision, which y'all probably all are aware of.
Did what now?
The nine-lot subdivision that y'all looked at. The council did approve that. And, and that, that's the end of my report.
Anybody have anything else before we adjourn?
Madam Chair, could I get, I don't know if it's Lisa to respond or, or Steve to respond, but what is the policy for remote attendance to meetings? Is, is it allowed?
I'm, I'm not the decision-maker. I'm not the person to ask. I didn't put the policy in place, which I responded to in an email. So, I mean, if, if you're asking staff to ask council, I mean, I suppose I can do that. Two members of council during the budget workshops, when they were talking about committees in general, said that they would not support remote attendance going forward. So, I mean, I'm not sure what else you would like me to do with that.
I didn't get the email, so I'll go back and check.
I, I did respond to you.
To see what your email said. It, it was a board meeting that the, I thought it was a board meeting, that the, the, our council meeting that the mayor was supposed to attend. So, okay, so you think it's, it's council that says, that says board members can't attend remotely?
That's my understanding at this point is that it's...
Okay. Thank you.
And I'm going to be here next month.
You won't? Well, thank you for letting us know that far in advance.
Yeah, it's, it's something that's come up and I got to do.
Okay, all right. Do I hear a motion adjourned?
I so moved.
Second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you all very much for your time and input.